Yes. We call this meeting on the Maisel 2020 Committee to Order. Meeting was properly posted on December sixth. Roll call.
Here.
Here.
Veal, here. Dierston.
Here.
Mickelson. Ruland.
Here.
Schlamm.
Here.
Springstet.
Here.
We have a quorum. Scott is at the daughter's podium tonight. Item four, additions or corrections to the agenda? And if there are none, is there a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
By Natalie.
Second.
By Jeff. Discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Those opposed by the same sign, that motion is carried. Item five, approved minutes from the last regular board meeting.
Motion for...
Motion by Jeff.
Second.
Second by Ray. Discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed by the same sign, that motion is carried. Item six, appearances and significant correspondence. Two folks I believe are here for the snowmobile trail, so you'll be allowed to speak, well, wait. Is it a new rule?
Yeah.
It's on the agenda.
Yeah, alright. You'll be allowed to speak in that presentation, okay? Otherwise, we'd ask you to speak now and register to speak, but... You're taken care of. You're taken care of, okay?
Okay.
Alright. Village President's report, I have nothing. Village Administrator's report is in writing. Any questions of Peter? Hearing none. Item nine, Deputy in Charge report. Stacy.
Hello. I have nothing really stands out to me this month. We had a shop with a cop on Sunday, and that went well. Nate took care of that. The truck areas are up, but that's, I believe Kyle's helping me out like with vacation checks and stuff. They're back to it. Otherwise, stuff's from Ottawa down, which is good. We're trying to get the word out to everyone, so lock their stuff up. But otherwise, if anyone has any questions for me?
There's a guy in a big white pickup truck with big tires, and he's been screaming up and down Main Street all evening.
Tonight? What time does this start?
Five, what was it, four, five, he's doing Main Street, just as we pulled up, he went screaming down there. I don't know who he's always... Yeah.
He was tailgating us.
I will have to listen.
Something to do.
Okay, we're moving on. Items ten, eleven, twelve, and thirteen, our second meeting of the month. Item fourteen, Mark is not here tonight, but he indicates there is nothing to discuss on Lake Marion. Item fifteen, update on Maisel 2020 Committee?
We're meeting next week.
Next week. So we'll have a report in January. Item sixteen, violations of property ordinance?
Nothing new right now. We've got several that are still in the process with their lawyers at the courts.
Item seventeen, flood update. Other than what you had in your written report?
Nothing besides that.
Okay. Item eighteen, old business. Item one, ordinance 2019-5, an ordinance repealing. Ordinance 2018-1, amending ordinance number 415-11, height and area exception. Sue, do you want to explain this one to us?
Okay, the reason this is coming back is because I sent it to Bill to find out exactly how I publish it in the paper. He told me because it was an ordinance, and we're rescinding the ordinance, we have to rescind it with an ordinance. So he wrote up this, this ordinance.
This is a temporary ordinance?
Yes.
That was put in place for the flood last year?
Yeah.
For new construction of homes?
Right.
And this expired in October of this year?
Right.
Okay, and this is being repealed?
Yes.
So this is simply a formality of previous discussion? Is there a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
By Troy. Second by Ray. Discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed by that motion? That motion then carries. Item two, amend snowmobile trail map for 2019 to 20. Sue, you've got some background on this, if you want to walk us through it.
Okay, the board at the beginning of November approved the snowmobile maps in Maisel. And apparently, there was one trail that was not on the map. This is the, the map that's amending that. And the, the road that was not on it is in blue. It's Corridor Thirty-Six Trail, is what it's marked on, on the map.
Is that a previously existing trail?
No.
It's a new trail?
It's partially. What they did is it ran north of the village before, and they can't run through that field because the farmer has winter wheat planted. So now they're running through the street, and it's a one-year-only trail, because next year they plan on going back to the old trail.
Folks, you have some issues with this?
Yeah, we are here to raise personal concerns, because the trail literally surrounds our property on three or four sides.
Okay.
We have a dog who hates snowmobiles. That's not the snowmobile's fault, it's the dog's fault. But we live where we live, so that he doesn't have to put up with that. And we had no notification. We came home one day, and there was red-orange snow fencing and signs all around us, literally surrounding our property, so...
Does it solve your issue if that, that is routed onto Handle Road, or...
Uh, yeah, that would, that would definitely help.
You're like in this, on Bridge Street and in this kind of shop.
Come down Handle Road, as opposed to going through the...
Through the field there?
That would, that would help us out tremendously, actually.
The other thing I wondered is that, why couldn't they, in coming through, cross underneath the power lines, which is neutral property anyway?
It would keep them off the street, but it wouldn't keep them out of the way from our property.
Well, still get them crossed, you know?
I mean, for us, Handle Road is definitely better, but I don't know.
I think that the one thought was that, you know, bridge at that point, our street at that point, and we love it that way, is such a small road. And so if you had a bunch of snowmobilers coming down there, and you had a school bus, or you had a dump, or you had the garbage truck, or, there's not a lot of room there. That's the only thing.
It appears that they're already on a village, or a street here on, what is this, this road that...
Siegerbrecht.
Siegerbrecht.
They're already on Siegerbrecht, so if they simply turn left onto Handle, and then across the field on the north side, that would eliminate your issue?
Yeah, for the most part.
Yeah, sure.
So, but they wouldn't have to, you know, wanna, I mean, that's kind of a tight corner there, so they'd cut across then, this field? So they wouldn't stay on Handle Road the whole time?
Wouldn't have to, but at least they're going north of these folks' property.
I think north of a lot of the other properties.
No, it's not, not all planted. All the stuff that's already planted.
Maybe, maybe folks, maybe folks, the way to resolve this is to tell the snowmobile clubs that they can use Handle Road, or any property north of Handle Road, that they're approved to, to go on. Otherwise, we approve their map with that change.
Yeah, I'm just thinking like, I think Erica Forstov lives right on that hairpin corner right there. And that's like, her house is on that corner. Just don't wanna, you know, obviously, they make, man, I think, doesn't up here lawless live on Handle Road? Like Mike and Janice?
Mark is down at the other end.
It would have to come back to the board to approve the new path if it's on Handle Road. Because there's new neighbors there.
So tight in there.
Well, because it's not posted for that.
Well, it's just posted to approve the map.
Okay, yeah.
Are they asked to adhere to a certain speed limit when they're within a certain range of residential properties, et cetera?
Stacy, can you answer that?
No, I don't know. They're not. I don't know. I haven't looked at the snowmobile statute. I can also email a mate, one of my mate guys.
Do you remember that? No, I didn't. Their snowmobile is posted speed?
Okay.
Yep, I would believe posted, no faster than a car could go, but...
Sure.
And the same thing holds no, no for tax kids, never give us anything else. If they're on a roadway, it should be roadway rules.
Okay, since...
I think this route is on a roadway, I heard they were saying.
Since there is no one else here, yeah, supporting this, is there a motion to, to... Sue, help me. Help me do it.
To approve the map as presented with one change, that the road has to stay along Handle Road, instead of going down Bridge Street and across the field.
Or north of Handle Road.
I don't think they can get north of Handle Road.
Or north of Siegerbrecht.
I think that's where the trail might be off.
Yeah, I think that the, the, the farm laying north of Handle Road is part of what's planted in winter wheat.
Okay.
Well, if they have to stay on Handle Road, I don't see where that's a big inconvenience.
I don't either.
It's no different than the four-wheelers that we have in town to drive on the road.
Is that a motion, Ray?
As long as they're on their one side of the road, they should be fine. Because they get up at the top of the road at that stop sign, they're just crossing highway wide and get on the rest of their road.
Is that a motion?
And then also, they would be obliged to follow the posted speed limit, right? Because it's supposed to go out in the field.
Well, they have to go by the post.
Is that a motion, Ray?
Yeah.
Ray makes a motion that the, the map as presented be accepted with the exception that the, the area from the intersection of Siegerbrecht and Bridge, follow north onto Handle Road, and then connect to the described trail. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Troy. Discussion. Hearing none. All those in favor of that motion signify by saying aye.
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 And those opposed by the same sign, that motion is carried. We're on to new business.
Thank you very much. Thanks for all the work you do. Have a great holiday.
You're welcome.
We're on to new business. Item one, allow bills to be paid before the end of the year with approval at first meeting in January, which is five weeks from now.
Some will.
By Jerry.
Second.
It's precedent, we've done this in the past.
Yes, we have. Motion by Jerry, second by Troy. Discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed by the same sign, that motion is carried. Item two, transfer Class A liquor license from Maisel Liquor located at Eighteen West Commercial Street to Maisel Mobile located at Ten West Commercial Street. And I see that this is marked effective January one, twenty twenty.
Yes.
Motion by Ray?
Yeah.
Second.
Second by Jeff. Discussion.
Is this the, the last Class A license available?
I'm not sure, there might be one other one.
I'm just curious if a new proprietor at the liquor store would be able to then apply for a liquor license to, if that was still to be a...
Because we had five, because when the law went into effect with quotas, we had five, and so they allowed us to keep them, their grandfather did.
But we just gave one to Taco Man, didn't we not?
Right.
We have been.
And Bed and Breakfast, I know.
Bed and Breakfast has one.
I've got them, I've got them all listed, so...
Well, if you've got me, you've got Archie, you've got Jeff, you've got, uh, no, the Bed and Breakfast, you've got Taco Man.
Okay, so then there, this like...
And then you've got the liquor store, that's seven.
I mean, I'd want to know, I don't know for sure. I'm just thinking like, if they're selling, they're selling the liquor store turnkey, you know?
Right, but this is a Class A, and it's not a Class B.
So Bed and Breakfast doesn't have a Class A, does it?
They've got a Class B.
Oh, Class A, yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
So for say, for like, a store to sell liquor?
Yeah.
So do we know what we have for a limit on?
That's, that's his loss.
Who's that? I'm just...
Danny's actually losing on, not being able to sell a building as a liquor store again.
Yeah, there's not a, there's not a limit on Class As, I don't believe. I think it's only on Class Bs.
I just hope for that thing to sit empty up there.
That's what I'm worried about.
Turnkey liquor store that can't sell liquor.
Yeah, they just sit empty then, I mean...
And that doesn't do us any good either.
It'll be selling the building.
Do we have a motion and a second?
Yes.
Further discussion?
And we know for sure that we have unlimited Class A? That this wouldn't be last?
I'm almost positive, but I will check, but, um...
That puts us in a weird spot, because it's, we'd hate to vote and move it out, and then we don't have it, and then someone comes in, and we just, I, we get stuck.
Folks, liquor stores are not... Are not... Liquor stores are less viable today than they were.
Certainly.
Wouldn't argue over this.
Yeah, but I would, I'd drop the trap.
I mean, I could go get mine, I've got a, I've got a work of...
Go ahead.
Thank you, Sue.
You probably could have looked it up on our phone, just to see how many Class A licenses are available in a municipality.
She's got a rock star.
Let's listen first. So Ray, do you have a Class A? No, we have a Class B.
It would be...
Quarters are... A state quota and alcohol license applies only to Class B liquor licenses.
Thank you, Sue.
So they can, so they're gonna apply for one of them?
No, this is a Class A.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed by the same sign, that motion is carried. Item three, approve election inspectors for twenty twenty and twenty twenty-one, and Sue tells me that Jennifer Sullivan asked to be removed from that list of inspectors. So you would be approving Gloria Beaver, Janet Carley, Brian Cole, Dawn Forsen, Kristy Frame, Janine Hill, Troy Jacobson, Perry Kerr, Kathy, Kathy Plessig, Michelle Lecourt, Janet Reed, Jane Rosblock, Richard Neustein, John Shackleton, Teresa Travis, and Betty Wick. Is there a motion?
Motion for approval?
By Troy.
Second.
Second by Natalie. Discussion.
All right, just a question with Teresa Travis. So her residence right now, temporary, is in Prairie, so she is still allowed to...
She has the intent to return.
And that's enough to be able to...
I thought you were gonna ask to butcher me on this.
Yeah.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed by the same sign, that motion is carried. Item four, approve operator's license for Gabrielle Donarue.
Motion to approve.
By Natalie.
Second.
Second by Jeff. Discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed, same sign, that motion is carried. Item five, approve utility budgets. These budgets were approved by the Utility Commission for Recommendation, I should say, these are recommended by the Utility Commission to the Board for approval. The electric shows a, without the Cardinal expansion, without any expansion for PI, a profit of one hundred forty-seven thousand, and a cash increase of two hundred seventeen thousand. Water shows a projected profit of fourteen thousand with a positive cash flow of sixty-five thousand. Sewer shows a profit of two hundred three thousand dollars with a positive cash flow of a hundred thirty thousand. And stormwater, a profit of eighty-four hundred with a deficit cash position of fifteen hundred seventy-five dollars, but that's, that's one that can easily be corrected. All the utilities for the year are profitable. Water utility, fifty-five hundred above budget for the year through Sep, through October. Electric, ninety-eight thousand. I have a budget through October. Sewer, four hundred sixteen dollars, I have a budget. And we really drained the stormwater because of the two-street projects this year. That shows a deficit of twenty-four thousand four sixty-six, but they did have the cash in their support.
I have one quick question.
Yes.
And I know it's been explained to me before, and I don't know where it went. When we pay the hydrant rental, where's that money go?
The general fund.
Okay.
It's kind of like a, um...
I mean, because...
Or, no, it goes from the general fund to water.
Do we ever pay off the hydrant?
No.
I mean, it's just always a, around, we take and give it back to ourselves.
Right.
Okay.
But it's different businesses.
Thought that's what's been explained to me before, but it still doesn't make sense. But anyhow, I understand.
Yeah.
Okay, that's the only thing. And make a motion to reaccept.
Motion by Ray to approve the utility budgets. Second by Troy. Discussion. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed by the same sign. Item six, I ask to have this put on the agenda, discussion on census complete count committee. This was an article in Miss wants Municipality Magazine, in the League of Municipalities. Seemingly encouraging municipalities to work to get the hard-to-count people, those young adults, people with disabilities, renters, senior citizens, people that might have difficulty completing a survey, provide them assistance. Sue, has anything like this been done in the community? Has any organization done this in the past?
No.
These, um... The census is coming out early in the year, and people are asked to respond by March and April of twenty twenty. Just a thought. And this would be helpful to the village to get as accurate a census count as possible, because it is used for state and federal funding of municipalities, and so the, the more accurate the count in Maisel Mead, um... I don't know whether we would be successful in getting volunteers to do something like this, or whether this is something that we should hire someone to assist people with?
I know in the past, when the Census Bureau had a hard time getting ahold of people, they would come in and, and ask me questions, and, and I would help them from here.
Okay. Ask you questions about...
You know...
How do we get ahold of these people?
Yeah, and, um, you know, are they, do they work during the day? How many people, do you know how many people are in their house?
Do they give you a list of addresses?
Yeah. And it's usually not that many. But, you know, it has been some over the years.
Okay.
So how do we know who isn't recording?
Census Bureau knows.
They know.
They, um, because they, they don't get their, their application back.
I think what they were, in here, the hard-to-count people are people that wouldn't necessarily receive mail at a post office box, right? Isn't that what?
How are they getting the, the list? Are they getting a utility list from us?
They send out maps, and, um... It's been ten years. They, they send out maps, they're called Tiger Maps, and they, they want us to verify addresses, and they've got lists, I think, from the past, and like, from, I don't know if it's from papers, newspapers, from, um, you know, from vital statistics. I'm not exactly sure how they get their, their lists of knowing exactly who is there. But I know that, that they, they do send the maps, and they have to be verified. But they, they do seem to know pretty much who lives where.
You're feeling at this time, this isn't that big an issue?
I don't think it is. I think that with, with the, um, with these complete count committees, they're, oh, this is with snowmobile. They are more geared towards communities that have hospitals, or nursing homes, or retirement homes. Where it's more of a, um, a centrally located, like, Black Earth might want one, because they've got the nursing home there. But we don't have any places like that.
So should we just postpone this discussion until it becomes an issue?
I think that would be a good idea.
Is there a motion to postpone this, then, to a later date, a later meeting?
I'll motion to postpone it.
By Troy. Second by Jeff. Discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed by the same sign, that motion is carried. During the committees. Item one, personnel, um, I have a request from a couple of employees of the village to review our vacation policy, and I have done so with some of the neighboring communities, and I'd like to call a personnel committee meeting for the second Tuesday in January at five forty-five, so fifteen minutes before this meeting. It'll be a very short meeting, I'll have a comparison for you of the various communities, and what their vacation policy is compared to, to ours. And it appears to me, from what I've seen, ours needs adjustment. Okay, item two, public works and property. Nothing for Ray. Three, parks and rec.
Nothing.
Item four, public protection and ordinance.
Nothing.
Five, finances, there a motion for payment of bills?
Some of.
By Jeff.
Second.
Second by Natalie. Discussion. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed by the same sign, that motion is carried. No meeting date?
No.
Good deal. Okay, so we are on vacation for five weeks, folks. Next meeting is January fourteenth. That's your Christmas present. That's, that's considered an employee benefit. That's all you get.
Yeah. Yeah.
Yeah?
Yeah.
I'll take it.
And then hopefully, by that meeting, we'll have a count?
I'm hoping. I've got all the, all of the invitations out.
Ray, we will have a count.
Well, that's what I mean, because I'm gonna go after, I'm gonna go buy that count that you give me that night, so...
We will have a count. Any further announcements?
The ambulance is leaving Montreal and heading here, an ambulance.
Yeah, yeah. All by itself?
All by, it's, it's...
Couldn't find a closer hospital?
Yeah. Apparently, we heard last night at our meeting, that the taxpayers have never paid for an ambulance since nineteen ninety-two, it's all, it's not been a tax burden, it's all been, um, user fees and the help of the...
You know, that's, that could very well change in the future.
That's right.
But we've been fortunate for these twenty-seven years not to have to tap the taxpayers for, for an increase in the levy due to an ambulance purchase, so...
I have one other thing, the Battle of the Vols is starting on the sixteenth, and we had one of our local businesses offer to match the chain... I have one other thing, the, uh, battle of the bulbs is starting on the sixteenth, and we had one of our local businesses offer to match the chamber, the two dollars per ballot for the food pantry, so, I mean, four dollars per ballot submitted, divided between the two food pantries.
So both?
Ballots are due then, um, Janu-, or, uh, December thirtieth, we're giving them that end of the year to do it, and, so get out and take it to a.
This is something you can vote multiple times on, I'm guessing, unlike, unlike a presidential election.
Right.
Okay.
Vote early, vote.
All right.
Yeah.
Further announcements? There a motion to adjourn?
Motion for adjourn.
By Troy.
Second.
Second by Natalie, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed, same sign, that motion is carried. Merry Christmas, happy holidays.
Same to everybody.